Mr. Mayor. There's a question. But thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you all for providing me a little bit of time to update you on the activities of the police departments last month. As many of you all could see, either responded to or had any of them. He made a fourteen year ago in a month, the police department reported that he got sexual assault by a grandfather. We took the report and worked with that in our county, but it's been pushed over to their criminal investigation commission following it. We also served a felony one on a female over at the Scottsdale Shopping Center upon search and for incidental arrest. We had an cocaine found on her person. She was then charged. We also had gotten a report and responded over to one of our local businesses for a drug investigation. Officer was handed some powdered substance that had apparently fallen out of a person's wallet while she was checking out. It was still tested positive from methamphetamine. Watched the video. Was able to see the person checking out at the counter and as she was getting a wallet out and one, we could see the substance falling out of out of the wallet, out of the plastic bag, so she was charged with that as well. We assisted with a burglary out here in nineteen hundred block of Irish Road. Been working with Alamo County and their detectives. Got a couple of potential suspects in that case. Conducted a traffic style Irish Road, James River Road, for a reckless driver. The field's bright test showed that the driver was intoxicated. He dressed as one DUI.
Can I say a question? Are we, I know there's been different ups and downs. Are we on an up or down? Are we down even around here?
In Scottsdale?
Do it.
Okay. South of Scottsdale? It's, it's not too bad. Down here in Forestville. This one, I suspect I'll actually work the burglary. I can have a pretty good idea of people who suspects were. Got one identified. He was a couple of minutes. I just need, I'm working with the, you got to put some on that headquarters and do the interview later. Uh, let's see. Message board that, I'll keep a message for it. Couple of weeks ago, it was finalized. It was three forty-two in the morning. Got three notifications of a major impact to the sign. I'm thinking it's been brought over. It was deployed up on Irish Road. So I got the rest and went over there and was looking at it and found that someone, two guys had parked over at the food line parking lot, walked over and pepperballed it. Anyway, they also hit a number of the traffic signs coming into the town off of Irish Road as well. So I think they saw our sign. Took the opportunity to park over at the food line. Then with the lights were deployed, polettes had it blurred face and the, of pins paving. So all I could see was a white guy with a short slim shirt on. Couldn't identify a suspect. So it was cleaned up, took a couple hours, but it was redeployed. We utilized it Saturday or all week. Yes. Operating flawless and it's a good machine. Um, let's see. Pass per council meeting, we attended for our community event. You can see that our auxiliary officers donated sixty point five hours of their time. Uh, it looks like cost savings thus far minus the one month, we spent just hundred fifteen thousand dollars. And you can see a number of the department units where we've attended some meetings. I did send one of our auxiliary officers to a forty hour crisis intervention training. So all of our full-time sworn officers have all been trained. So now my goal is to have, you know, auxiliary officers trained in C I T as well. So Mickey Schneider was the first. So we just got back from that Friday of last week. I sent two of our officers over to the academy in the general instructor school. Um, my goal is, is to try to, they have to get general instructor first. Then once they get their, right here, apprenticeship done, I can send them over to do firearms training. So then they can come back and teach our officers firearms. And then the other one, I wanted to try and get that driver's training. But Paul got sick this past weekend and he called out today. So I'll have to resend him over there to that school. He's not going to be able to finish it.
Just the background ones. I, I know we all, we all feel this way, but please, anytime you're able to do so, make sure our auxiliary, auxiliary police officers are thankful.
Yeah, sure.
What they do. I mean, I do not take that for granted. I mean, I, we see that there. We all see that. You know what that we want, we're really thankful.
Make sure I tell them all the time. Thank you for saying that. Uh, also, all of our, all of our officers in A P O, we've implemented all of the fire D C and G O's training for the year. So we're all current on training. Uh, the stats, anyone having a question on that before I go into the Glock safety?
Well, I guess, you know, I just had a gun on a trend. You know, but February, February last, we're looking at a hundred fifty calls for thirty in the town. You know, we had periods and I, now we have our N two fifty. So we see this trend sort of creeping up. It's important to keep our eyes on that.
We're pretty busy. You can see the number of, the total number of calls for service in the family. Uh, so called service, what eighteen subjects. And then our department has responded to the inside. Just under ninety percent of those calls for service. Looks pretty good. The many, there's many calls. It looks like, just so you all know, the total call out is clean out now. It is sizable. And shoot, we're almost at three thousand calls per day that we've been able to list out of the statistics. So I know Alamo County, their supervisors can't say enough about the quality of work that our officer is doing to help them. And they just appreciate it when they come down with the help. So we've got a really good working relationship with the C P O's and I appreciate them much. Um, the one thing I really wanted to touch on is last work second, we talked about Glock safety, the L P R team. And we have Jim and I had a lot of conversation, you know, in the past about that. Would you all like for me to just kind of, you all got the bullet points, what it about? I think one reason that thought that everybody remembers was that I wasn't sure if it would be beneficial for us to apply that grant through the state police heat programs now or wait until after the first of the year. But I was able to talk to the first sergeant with the state police and we are eligible to get the twelve five now. And then July first, we would be eligible to get the twelve five for next year as well. Uh, so there, there, so when, so if the council approves this, we would spend the twelve file upfront. Get the cameras down here. All I need to do is submit a receipt to the state police, the first sergeant, and they send us a check back for the cameras. That's, and the sergeants telling me that it's a very, um, a very small turnaround before, pre-work the application for the grant. And then once we spend the money, the turnaround will pay back reimbursement back to the town. What I was concerned about and work with Glock safety and Jim was very instrumental in helping me. Work with Glock safety, they typically have done two-year stints. It was a two-year contract, what I asked them to do, because I didn't want town to have to put any money or be responsible for any money, show the grant right out. I asked them if they would consider doing a twelve-month contract with us and they agreed to it. So if I would ask council to allow us to put this on the agenda for next Monday. So council could take a vote for approving or not approving. If approved, I'll submit the application to the state police. Get the application. I'll work with Glock safety, have the cameras down here installed. They'll come down and install it for us. And then us, once we spend the money, I'll get the receipt back to the state police. They reimburse us. And that'll be continued. So if July first, we find that the grant is not going to be available at police departments, then our current contract will go to December, twelve-month contract. And once that contract's over, we have no obligation at that point as a town. Okay? So it's twelve-month contracts. So Jim and I engaged, uh, over the terms and conditions. Sent them to him. And we met with Glock safety's, um, team, legal team and had a pretty good conversation. I felt Jim was able to get a lot of what we were asking for out of the conversation. Uh, Mr. Bowling was asking for them to cover us, the police department. Should there be a fourth amendment violation, anyone don't know what a fourth amendment violation, uh, illegal search and seizure. So let's say an officer gets an alert from a camera and the officer doesn't do any follow-up checks and no doubt stops the car. Uh, it is the wrong car, wrong tag. Um, it had been taken out of the system or something like that, right? And the person would have a fourth amendment issue. But to remedy that on the department side, I've got a comprehensive policy that one of our neighboring jurisdictions usually I've gone through it, read it, and the policy is very, very good. And it makes very clear within the policy that if an officer were to receive one of these alerts from Glock safety camera, that they, number one, they have to verify, verify, verify the information with dispatch, number one, and make sure that before they stop, that the vehicle is still connected to a criminal investigation, uh, those type of things. So there are some checks and balances in the general order that ensures that the officers, uh, try to mitigate any fourth amendment violations as possible. I, I don't necessarily, I don't see it as a risk uh, once we get the policy put in place and approved by council. Uh, it's like anything else we do out here on the street. We just have to verify the information before you take action. You get an alert and that, you just have to verify, right? All kind of folks at the fire department, uh, they didn't want the cameras at their location. I've talked to, you can see here. My potential recommended deployment locations would be down towards the police department with one set of cam, one camera system. Uh, monitoring traffic, you know, in Southbound coming in and out of Buckingham. One camera system monitoring pegs coming in and out of the Flora Masa in Scottsville. I've worked with one of our local businesses up on Irish Road. And he and his mom have approved location on their property for one of the systems. And I've also talked with another one of our local business partners, uh, at James River Road in Valley Street. And they said that they are on board with us being able to use, utilize their property, you know, at least in their system. I would get a, you know, a form signed by him to give us consent to deploy on their property. So their signature will be ready. Um, and that's kind of where I'm at with throwing to the other list.
No, I, I mean, I was, was for that.
Well, my thought is is to put them down here at police department. It's town property. My goal would be, so, so the cameras are all, all solar powered. Um, might be able to show you what it, what it looks like, but no hardware wiring that's required. They're all solar, you know, charged. Um, at Dancy's and the other location, they're going to be on a headstanding pole. Camera will be mounted along with the solar panel on the poles. What I have to figure out from the deployment team, if approved by council, is where down there around the police department we could put it. I'm here now, I'm looking. I don't think it's a good idea. And I don't think council would appreciate it if the, uh, systems were put on the light pole. And I'm here and I talk about it and said those poles are, they belong to, um, that company, right?
Yeah, that is for permission. That, all the people need their permission to put the articles on it. I don't want to give that. So,
so the one place over there in front of the jail where that ground is at, we could put one there. That's on town property, north and south. That would be a standing pole. We had to, the, the concern I have is east and west down on East Main Street is where you put it. If I can't put it on the police department building itself, I don't think it's a good idea to put it out on one of the poles. Uh, I don't want to put it in one of the sidewalks because they're all blocked. And I don't want to put it on one of those trees down there. My question is, is where the trees are at. That's ground there, but could we put them there? Because I think the trees are going to block out some recharging. And that might even still be on the way to be done. And you can't put them in the way to be done. So that location on East Main Street, I have to give you that.
The one thing I'd say, Chief, this goes back to your report before several of the ways that we learned about these crimes was because of video. And you had mentioned, maybe we shared about this, that this was a way it can simply help have more eyes on the town and you were capable to it. So it seems to me if we can cover the financial side, which I think you're making clear we can, because it's going to be covered. It seems obvious to do this. I think people who have privacy issues also, unfortunately, we have to live in a world, you have to go both ways with that. You have to understand that if you don't have eyes, you can't see. But I mean, we're, we are, we were just talking about how this significant criminal was just caught. And I represented, that's the thing that we were all talking about that. And also all of that comes from surveillance. So so I, I think it's wise for us to, to increase that surveillance in the effort for public safety.
There were a couple of things that I remember when I was appointed as your chief here in the town. A number of councilors absolutely wanted more cameras around our business district and on our streets. And that was the whole premise of us and the council approving the grant that was approved last year, the six cameras in the police department, which has helped us solve a number of, uh, just down around East Main, that intersection. But that being said, there right now, currently a hundred and twenty police departments in the state of Virginia that are using Glock safety. Um, one of our north jurisdictions implemented, implemented, you know, this year. And they had an opportunity to, uh, resolve two hundred and forty-one cases in their jurisdiction due to Glock safety. You touched on the privacy issues. Glock, the Glock cameras, they only take a picture of the license plate of the car. They do not videotape, take pictures of any occupants in the cars, picture of the license plate. And the so an officer can't, once they're trained, they can't utilize unless trained. But let's say our officers are trained, which I plan on doing that for the month. They cannot just really, really go into the computer and start pulling tags up the system to see who's coming to anybody's particular house or doing any particular thing. The only time it will allow you to access it is if there is a police report associated with that search. Whether it's from a police department in Scottsville, Charlottesville, or any other of the one hundred and twenty police departments in the state of Virginia, the two lots. It also has a policy mechanism, which while I will ask my sergeant once a month, do a poll, ensure that our staff, you know, and that's, it's in the policy, the draft policy. Ensure that our staff is, uh, using the system the way it's intended to be used. Uh, that, that there's no anomalies there. Uh, data is the one, when I say data, the license plates are stored in the system, uh, thirty days. Uh, it could be longer. I think thirty days is a good time period for us to be able to get any types of reports that might come into us. Um, for us to be able to put reports out of the jurisdiction. Uh, if council feels that thirty days is too long, then I'll look for Glock safety to come up with a, uh, hundred thirty there. But I think thirty days is reasonable, uh, for us to be able to have the information available to our officers should a crime happen. And we have to go back into the system and see if it come through town Scottsville.
One of the other things I would say, Chief, might be an odd way of saying this, but uh, when my father-in-law was alive, we would occasionally go visit in Louisiana where the family is. And I became fond of driving through the night and what I would say is it struck me a few times when we drove through the night that you're pretty far in a trip if you want to go pretty far. And what I'm saying by that is sometimes we don't realize that it could be some horrible thing that happened in Scottsville. And people who were there, were there five or six hours ago, eight hours ago, passing through Scottsville for whatever reason. And there is a need to have some way to aid in, not only for the safety of our community, but to recognize there are, we're interrelated, you know, that just, just see again what happened in this situation, that this terrible crime that took place. And, you know, I think they're finally ones where my grandmother used to live in Pennsylvania. And just, that's just the reality of the world. And so I, I just think again, but it goes both ways. We want to always be protective of privacy. At the same time, I realize when I carry this thing, I pretty much surrender almost anything that I can do, which is my privacy is they know, everybody knows where I am when I happen. So it's a recognition of, of it. So I, again, I think it's something important. It's, I think it's obvious. And that I think it's a wise thing for us to do it with the town.
I agree. And I think we also have to always look out what the world looks like in the future, what, you know, most of us don't think about the dark side of technology and things like that. And I'll tell you, I haven't been a victim of a very serious doctor situation in my lifetime. I always knew it from that lens, who's tracking, what's going. So I think it's good to just be healthy about looking at all signs of things.
Absolutely.
Chief, we, um, we had discussed a thirty-day archival and talking about not being worried about that under your jurisdiction, though what happens in the future. And we talked about having a policy that if it were to be extended, that it will come through council. Is it still your intent to build that into your policy?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Uh, I wanted to try to get some direction from council this evening as to how you all felt about the thirty days before I put a number in there. The, the draft policy that I have has a number in it from the jurisdiction where I've gotten their L P R, um, policy document. And I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on what your expectations was before I put it in under that policy.
I think thirty days is feasible. I just want to make sure that it cannot be changed.
Unless it
Unless it has authorization from the council and there's transparency around that change.
Yes, ma'am. I will make sure that it's in the policy for sure. It's already in the policy. I just need to
Yeah, it's not what it is. That's, that's not, I'm good.
I was just wondering about the weight loads.
They take out all of it. They compare all of it with red, right?
We don't, we don't, they track this all up and they repair it. It's not our equipment. We're, we're in essence paying to use it. It's their equipment. Now, if we damage it, it's damaged because of our negligence, then we're going to be responsible. But I won't be reaching that kind of way. But before I ask council to approve putting it on the agenda for next Monday for a vote, um, does everyone feel pretty comfortable about where we're at? Because I've got a meeting with Glock safety tomorrow. Maybe before I ask that question, we hear from Jim.
I think you pretty much covered everything. Council's fortunate to have a, a police chief that is proactive in, in a way to address concerns before they become concerned.
Well, Jim was fighting. I can tell you that he, he did a very, uh, their, their legal team was on the thumb and he asked a lot of really good questions. Um, and then he pulled, I had the interest of the town and its residents, uh, forefront and they got it. So they did make a lot of concessions for us to ensure that, uh, that this program would work for our town. Um, so I was, I've been pretty happy with, at least the young man that I talked to, Branch Williams. He's been a good, good partner to work with.
They, they didn't make the concession with, with the risk such as it is. I think it's all low risk anyhow probably, but where they didn't make a concession about to identifying the privacy concerns and, uh, fourth amendment concerns. Because that's where all the cases are now coming, because of
Also, I would say how headlines and several papers, that's, that's the question. You've got certain individuals and certainly they're right to feel that way. But they don't want the cameras looked at all the time. I see it all, always concerned about, uh, seeing and that's, that's been the basis of the cases.
The, the only one that's active right now is one out of North Virginia. It's a federal lawsuit that was brought by ACL view on behalf of one or two people down there. I think it was ACL.
No, no, it was a privacy group.
Privacy group.
Specifically.
Okay. And it's going through the system right now. I think it's in the appeal process, Jim?
No, I don't think that made it, but I didn't, I didn't track that case back.
I read it and I, I, it was difficult for me to discern if it was still going through the system or if it was in the appeal process right now. I think it's still going through the system, like you said, Jim. But while this is going on, Norfolk Police Department's done purchased another hundred cameras. They are not concerned in every question about this privacy, that the vehicles are, the tanks are being towed around in a public place.
Right.
Public theater. Uh, hybrid fuel already utilizes all of the system in their department.
See, the concern is not losing, it's having to defend. And, and that, that's, that's six-figure stuff, you know, in, in case. But you have your federal liability insurance policy. Base Corps is going to pick up and forth on the claims that you're involved. If they provide you, your defense company, so you're protected there.
So I feel very good about where we're at with this. And I would recommend to council, if we move forward, I would ask you also to consider allowing Mr. Reddell to put this along the agenda for next Monday's meeting for council to take a vote on it. Um, for my meeting tomorrow, does anyone have any reservations about you talking to him about everything most possible for council? Uh, I certainly can wait until next Monday's vote before I sign any contracts or anything. Uh, but is anyone?
Have they renewed it? Like, I guess we're going to do a free tissue. So I mean, it's, I think it's worth a trial, you know, to see if it's worthwhile. You know, at least one of them, you know, and then we get about companies for, how they've been viewed for, for a number of years and how that's worked out for them.
Well, I can just tell you that in talking to one of our jurisdictions, it's really close to us right now. They just implemented this year.
First time?
First time. And it's been useful in two hundred forty-one
Right.
or other cases. We had that three kids that was abducted in Agustin County last week, had a vehicle plate number description. If that vehicle went south through the town of Scottsville, one of the L P Rs would pick it up. If that vehicle went south through the town of Scottsdale, one of the LPRs would have picked it up, they alerted us to it, paid, was in Scottsville, Miss Davis. Um picture of the license plate, picture of the vehicle, and we would have known kind of which direction that they would have gone. I've had one here in the town of Scottsville, uh an elderly person. Uh but by the time I got to where they were supposed to be, they're gone, and I didn't leave them, they're stopped, checked on their safety. And on the way they got across the line, so they were all stopped.
That's beautiful.
Yes, sir.
I'll be getting other questions for chief on anything we asked Javier to know in the general capacity.
Yeah, and as as treasurer, I I think, well, I I agree with uh. Chief Jenkins said it should be on the agenda for next month, because treasurer at some point will have to do a reappropriation to capture that revenue coming in. And that quote unquote expense coming out, but it wouldn't be any different from any successful grant we have in the town.
That's a zero, so I'm okay.
Yeah.
Put the money out and it gets replaced, so thank you.
Becomes a an accounting.
I did just get the uh affordable, the invoices for the owner of the. Last week, we should be getting a check of fifteen hundred dollars back from that grant that we're currently working for. So the only thing really we have pending out there is the purchase of the traffic cones and then that reimbursement process, but uh that grant is going very well. Uh the only other thing I've had on my agenda for council to consider was the uh. Any follow-up questions regarding that order of the new police car? There was some conversation, I know the mayor.
My other question is, has there been any updates on the good sign off on the plane?
I I spoke to the board members of Justice of uh the weekend. And he had, he spoke to one of the other board members, it's kind of running the process, and she said there have, the judgment's not signed yet.
You know, like I said, I'm reading your log as well, so I'm all of those, but you're showing about those hours and.
Yeah, I thought we weren't, you know, we could order, but we weren't committed to it.
So the truck's been ordered, but until we go down there with cash in hand, the truck's not. Um we did a P O, so he would order it, uh but we haven't signed any paper to say, so if the truck comes in. Uh and we don't want it, then we just release it and it's going to someone else. Um however. I would suggest in the in the folks that I've talked to that are on the board for the rescue squad, that that. Money has absolutely been approved to the police foundation, it's just a matter of when is it going to be transferred to the police foundation? If if we were to wait, this this vehicle now is forty eight eight oh five, if we were to wait another year, two years. You know, you can anticipate those purchases of those vehicles, they'll have six to ten thousand dollars for a year, that's just the trends.
Well, that's what we talked about last time, do we need to vote on this?
We would, I.
Next session, Monday, can we put it on the agenda?
Here's my question. If the vehicle comes in, let's say one. Will the town put the forty eight eight oh five up? Or the purchase of the vehicle?
Why?
And then once the transfer from the rescue squad board over to the police foundation, the police foundation would reimburse the town for the purchase of the vehicle.
Yes, no question.
So that's the question, and yes, ma'am, I would ask that, maybe that be put on the agenda for Monday?
Just so it's formally logged and sent voted and there's no confusion about this in the future.
Yes, ma'am, just for this particular vehicle. Uh we're.
On that job.
Yes, sir.
And I plan on being here on Monday, should anyone from the public have a question about what might be going on? Uh so I'm not gonna stand you up and have you answer the questions for ask from police.
That would be.
Uh I think, thank you to say chief too, with the, maybe using my language to say. With the uncertain timing about, so there's a good faith grant from the rescue squad, police wants to. Utilize that, the town is working with everybody to try to make sure that we. In good faith, bring this new piece of equipment to the town in a way that makes sense, because we can't control the timing. We want to be helping one way or the other, ideally, the grant will come and then we'll. Uh go that route, but if it doesn't come that way, we have a tool available to help you move forward with the purchase. So now we're gonna get reimbursed by the rescue squad.
I know Javier has started working on the paperwork, Javier, I don't want to speak out of turn, just tell me to be quiet, uh.
No.
I know he's already started and initiated the paperwork with the uh egg grant. So that is like roughly fifty two thousand dollars once we get that reimbursement back to us.
Yes.
So that'll be something that that is still out there spending back to the town from the last, while we bought. What, two years ago, year and a half ago?
This is technically twenty-three fiscal year, so yeah, two years ago, probably beginning of twenty, uh no, end of twenty.
Roger that.
Got it, yeah.
So that funding will be coming back to us as soon as the the egg folks do down here, and I know Javier's been working diligently with. Those folks to get them to come down and do their final inspection of the equipment and then do the reimbursement. So that's kind of that process, so we do have that money coming back to us, just hopefully we can get them a little bit more. So that like.
Well, I also, you know, I asked Javier to look into our long-term reserves, if you recall, I asked. About Becky had mentioned at one point that we should have a certain amount in in reserves. And we had much more than enough in reserves, and the best I could find on the interim was that town should have at least fifteen percent of their OpEx budget. In reserves, now we have what, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on our inventory for your tape. We have about sixty-seven percent. Of that in our long-term, so my perspective on this is that if we need something. To help town staff do their job better, but we shouldn't just spend willy-nilly. But that money is there and we can maybe have more than enough to cover the expense should that.
Well, so.
Okay, Javier, you'll put that on for vote then on Monday, right? So we have the block cameras and the police vehicle.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay, that's, that's, yeah, I understand, we didn't get to that. Okay, good, so we have the public chairman, is there a vote next week on it?
Yes, you can have a choose.
Austin, I would definitely. Say that that should be the agenda.
All right, thank you, we will appreciate our hard work, yes, sir.
We did a full day on Saturday, so we had two more vehicles, it's been about, what, four hours, we're done.
Got chance, okay, sorry, shake.
Yeah, although the water, when the major conference is here in the usual, and to report all those, it's a hell of a holiday.
Yeah, uh that's the, that's the main, my right, I'm careful. Uh everybody that was able to attend, so I'll how busy the town was on a forty degree uh December day. And so um uh I'm not personally not focused on how big the success was, I'm more focused on how it improved from last year. And so uh we're building a little bit each year, is the goal, and maybe a little bit better each year, and um. Uh that's the way it went, um I had to talk to a lot of vendors at the uh holiday market, it says uh. Revenue was way up from last year and a lot of the businesses, when I visited them, they said they have to wonder if that's the end of the year as well, so. Um it's success, um and other news, I think, I can't remember the last update I got you, that we were close to finishing with the tree walk. Um the inventory is now officially complete, uh we correct a few mistakes, so that's all done and uh the request for ordering the uh tree tags has been made and so. Should be getting this in, because how long tree tags take to make, I don't know, and then uh. If that's at the time, maybe we may get them up by the end of the year.
Are you gonna present those, the map and the, what they look like to us beforehand?
Um actually, I'll show you the pictures of the tree tag.
Sure, then I can send that to us, let's see what they look like, and be good to kind of know where they are.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I mean, there's, I mean, I guess we've all heard things about it, vagueness and vandalism and things like that.
Yeah, but it's true, yeah.
Now, they're gonna be on the trees or on the ground?
Uh most of them will be on the trees, there's a couple of trees on uh private property where people don't want them to access, but we can put the tree hopefully. On town property, uh on a little post, but uh on the tree, but that's only two that I, you know, love working. Um. And then um holiday happenings, um tree tags, I feel like there's one more thing, but it escapes me at the moment, like. No, that's been on me for at least a while.
We did check with, uh you remember Dan Curran, who does the uh. Town director, we uh we had none of us that heard from, usually by November, he has one of them, and it tells a little James, uh who touched with the. And he is working on it, we did in touch with those schools.
Yeah, that was last week and said next couple of weeks, he'd been working on Lynchburg or somewhere down South Louisiana.
Do you have any questions for the tree work?
That's my favorite, but it was a wonderful event, what I saw, but I didn't.
Well, many thanks to a lot of.
Well, I know, but here we.
I think it's a collaboration.
Yeah, we did a good job.
Yeah, that's year-on-year improvement.
Yeah, 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 there's, like I said, a lot of.
Or some collaboration.
Yeah.
Down to the last minute, as I was getting ready to walk away, there was a, I don't know, Santa had it right out of here. And so I'll tag Greg in one more time, so I appreciate that.
And Sam, okay, okay, we're still.
Okay, that's, I talked to him on the way back and that's all he could say, he doesn't, yes, appreciate it.
I don't think it's all about.
That's right.
And so uh so you can go next, and he involves all of the art, and I'll show you what he said.
I'd almost, I just, you know what he said, my vendors were extremely happy, we had. Well, over a couple hundred people, visit the arts market, two of our vendors reported over a thousand dollars of of sales. Um and everybody averaged about three hundred fifty to four hundred dollars that day. Um it was, it was good that it was cold, because people came into the victory hall to get warmed up. Uh we got lucky with own taco being right outside our front door, that was really quite exciting. Upcoming events on this Sunday at three o'clock, a gift to the community is going to be a pre-movie screening of It's a Wonderful Life. And uh it starts at three, doors open about two thirty, rumor is that one of the characters from the movie is going to make a. Special guest appearance at the movie screening, so don't miss it. Um in January, we're very excited, we're going to have uh Grace and Glory, the play. Uh Victory Hall Players will be presenting that, um I think it's uh gonna be a very important piece of of art presented. To the community, so I hope you all will make plans to come to that play. And I just want to thank uh James, the chamber and town, the holiday happening, I thought the Grinch did great. He was a crazy person, wasn't he, and your guys keeping those little kids safe, I mean, there were forty at one time. Looking for the Grinch, and I understood they interrupted your talk, mayor, is that right?
Uh I didn't talk in that group, uh.
But uh but um it really, it went off without a hitch, I think, right, there wasn't any.
Everyone was safe, no injuries?
Yep.
There was nothing but positive on the public safety side.
Yep, there was one little kid that the Grinch scared the betebers out of, but short of that, I think he, I think he'll get over the trauma.
He did, he approved the sign that uh the big fancy slot, they do. Uh that's a really good looking sign, everyone on the board liked it and approved it, Javier, it was a bit within uh regulation, so. You proved that, and the other one we did was. Some renovation work up the Harrison Street, I think so, I don't, I don't remember exactly, I just thought, wow, this uh. Family is renovating a house up there and looks like there's living stuff, so.
Here's what you do, you call a.
I just must have, I don't know, got anywhere, but I'm glad you're looking at the light shot, the lights. Yes, I think that's uh, that's something we all need to be aware of, and a lot of newer. This is and and presidents know about, you gotta have these little lighting and uh, you know, or shields of. Job is gonna head that up, it's not revolved here, not the list, right, uh the uh, how we complain about the town and the streetlights, but I don't think there's much we can do about that. Some people like it, so. I I have a question about that, and this actually goes back to you, chief, just 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 on that, on that issue. I happen to be somebody who really likes stars, and I'm continuing to learn, I appreciate the dark sky. At the same time, it's a balance between that and safety, and there's a difference between when. A store is open and then when a store is closed, and I, so I would be interested, I'm not saying this is a thing that we need to talk about necessarily tonight, but. I think that issue, the misunderstanding, and so, again, I say this as a stargazer and. The I, in the wintertime, it's decreased as the light is blocked, I see more light in my yard, because of the. But it's an interesting topic to think about in the long run as to what light should be when a store is open at night, what light should be when a store is closed at night. And then what are we trying to do, because we do want to balance both the opportunity of not having too much electricity. And not in damaging the night sky, so it's being on the other hand, the safety issue, so I'd be interested in the long run. Maybe things that you see in in other places that look at what that right balance is, and to think about how that difference is, so if we have a light. What's, what's a good balance of if, in terms of. The same thing, we want safety, on the other hand, we want to not be too bright and brighter than we need to be at certain times. I know, for example, living next to the dollar general, they've decreased their lighting if the night goes on, which I'm very happy for. Um but at the same time, it's an interesting thing to think about, that I, that they have a setting in D C that shows. Where we were as a nation in nineteen thirty, nineteen fifty, nineteen seventy, whatever it is, and. It's an interesting way to think about what, what is the right way to balance light. It's it's not just simple, it's not just saying turn off the lights, it's, it's how we do it, when do we do it, how is the timing? What are the lights, it gets complicated, and I'm sure it's only going to get more complicated in the future.
All right, that's something we can, but.
I have a whole hour of discussion about all this.
Well, I'm only mentioning, more mentioning you to, I'm interested as from a, from a safety perspective and.
I think that's an important point, that is a trade-off of that, you know, from my perspective, right, walking out into, you know, food lines open late at night and I gotta run in here. I want it pretty well lit when I'm coming in, you know, I feel that if it's too dark, I'd be unsafe, so there is that down, which is to be considered.
Okay, uh moving on, Super School was uptown, last, uh, meeting and. The gentleman was in a little bit in Plamatory, so I did not attend, and Javier.
You only go when it's in Plamatory, right?
It was pretty simple, I think, he was gonna, Javier, if you're a reporter.
Yeah, so I'll write up a brief I wrote for tonight, uh planning commission primarily focused on the comprehensive plan, Lincoln Lewis, and then meeting the person. Uh so I got some bullet points for the cop plan update, track chains have been a quote-unquote approved for the draft cop plan, making it much more readable. Lincoln is meeting with individual planning commissioners this week and next week to write four of the twelve summaries needed for the twelve interactions. Or intersections of the principles and goals on the matrix, planning commissioners are currently drafting their half of these, this summary for contribution to the cop plan. Uh we plan to complete the eight remaining summaries for the matrix in early January, the planning commission reviewed our draft current zoning map. I will, this week, continue revising the map, Jack Maxwell found various changes questioned by the planning commission during a review of the map on Monday. Uh the future use map is the next for completion following final draft of the current zoning map, I'll be working on finalizing economic figures to update in the cop plan. Uh adding and adding the twenty twenty-three survey summary uh to the cop plan. Uh second, planning commission wish that I report uh that our planning commissions frustrated. With the town council uh not proceeding with a recommended action. Uh on a growth and accessibility planning, quote-unquote, technical assistance program. uh, on a growth and accessibility planning, quote unquote, gap technical assistance program application for this year. Um, they recommended that gap grants be included as a proposed project in the formulation of a capital improvement plan. That's a summary of the uh, last month's.
I understand that last part, there, there must give a, sort of grant.
Yeah, so I presented maybe two months ago, um, the growth and accessibility planning grant to the town council.
Oh, okay.
Um, and it's that planning grant prior, they, they brought kind of shovel ready in multi-modal transportation, so long way of saying, you know, from sidewalks to, to bikes, to roads, to bridges, all just any way to get around town.
Oh, it's nice that we have.
Well, the government service committee did not meet this month, but they did send them, finished them last month and uh, just so let's know what we're working on, uh, and will be continued to be done probably forever, so. Uh, we're looking at maintenance issues, you know, especially maintenance issues that need to be done now that Boeing seat is over. And I think James tapped in a lot of, okay, I think he did a good job getting that, this is like something that do that in a different kind of way. So I think that, that's taken up a lot of his time, but he's got a lot of projects uh, over the winter. Then we're also looking at the uh, capital improvement plan, I guess it's a budget plan, we're gonna continue working on that. That might be part of the cop plan, I guess, I guess, too, so looking at the things that need to be uh, accomplished or done over the next several years, so. It's gonna cost some money. And the last thing we worked on, or we have, we are working on, is the, the policy and procedures on donations. Uh, and we're gonna uh, but I guess we'll eventually vote on that to see if the town council wants to approve those donations to and then list to whom to give them and how to do it and what money's available and uh, make sure it's fair and transparent. If you're looking at, we're really thinking it out.
Any questions for government services? So far as we're.
Uh, I don't have the minutes yet, but uh, you know, we're still waiting on signs and markers that uh, of your sort are going. And then they could be installed. We're looking at uh, trying to get the, our park put on the Almar webpage. It's technically an Almar park, but I think there's a section that could be put on the webpage or maybe it could be uh, you know, noted down there. We, you know, we're gonna need money to fix up the road, there's, the road really needs some work. Uh, not just the the entrance ways, but the, of course, the road should be, the dock. That would take a special either grant or approval to get the money for that, we probably need some estimates for that. But that, the road to get down the dock is gonna get sharp. That's, that's adult. That's a town one.
So we can use that grab and to help fix.
Yeah, so it's all, we use that, it's just a matter of getting a alright, we do that, of course, you know.
I'm just kinda thinking it through, you know, going into the park as you come past the church and around, you get that real big hole there that. Now, they just keep putting big trucks down, making it deeper and deeper and deeper, it'll take a half load of route out just to fill that, so.
Yeah.
It's passable. I was just curious, I've seen those two piles of big rip raffin in that gravel down there, how we might be able to utilize that, and do we utilize it to fix up, going down and then wait to try to fix the bottom part, or? I don't know what you're all playing.
One, one of the things that has happened in the past, I don't remember what year, this, this would really be about how many years, but the repair on the actual inland road was done by, I'm pretty sure, the tower people, it wasn't done by the town, in other words, there's a there's work that they do to keep the road, in fact, that's probably worth checking a lot to see.
Yeah, that's an interesting, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's not, the, the stuff that we've done as historically been inside the gate, it hasn't been any of the stuff on the outside of.
And who's supposed to take it?
Uh, so my understanding, the, the main repair work that was done might be six or eight years ago, it was not, it was, it was the tower people. Well, they do it, yeah, so we could keep talking about that, they do it on what they're interested, so to speak, so I think that would be good.
One of the things I think that exists are opportunity ones, when they were chipping up the asphalt along Scottsdale Road. But by the time, you know, we kind of, I've got my act in the other. Maybe it's already about painting some of it, it was already gone. And it's all been committed, you know, there are a couple piles still around town, I've put some peelers out to see. Once they utilize what they need, if we can pay for what they have, I think it was twenty-five dollars a truckload. Dump truck load when they brought it down to these locations, holes here in the town, so I'm still keeping my eyes open to see if we can get some of, to help us with some of the potholes back there, because that asphalt, chipped up asphalt's very good for those things. Oh, we'll get some money, it's no problem. We've got people. Anything else, Mark?
Uh, the, the last thing is uh, we'll be working on the, you know, improvements for Canal Basin Square and I guess what uh, what, what can be done by Jam or what can be contracted out, and again, money, whatever's money's available to uh, fix up, uh, there's a lot of little issues at the, the now basis square that need taking care of. And we go to them over the winter, just like the, the, you know, this is how to do it. You know, I, I just wanna note that I, I see somebody there almost every weekend, that they're you know, this store is very popular, traction, people out of town, and it's free, and they come there and they see it in twenty minutes, half hour. And uh, you know, I think that's, we need to really make that, or I'm gonna focus for us. So if we're looking at uh, how that could be improved or maintained, we do have some money for that, we have five, ten thousand dollars for that, so. It's just a matter of getting some, votes.
Alright, thanks, sir. Where do we assume service?
Um, so before I start an emergency preparedness, I just wanted to let council know that the last little library is standing there. I think it's out there, looks very much like the first one. Only the title, instead of saying Scottsdale's little book box, I think every time it was Barton's little book box. And Barton was the book more amassed at the festival, we've got signs Barton on the side so that kids would know who Barton was. Um, that's so to go into the butterfly garden.
Back walkway?
Yeah, I'll be in, damn, she's reached out and then to try to get a response. I know it's not weather time to necessarily do that, but at least pick the spots, so you need to make sure that that happens, and then when weather permits and Jam has time, he can set the post and set the library and that. Um, the, only goes into the existing library a couple times, uh, couple times a month, you know, three or four times a month, checks it out. There's been a fair amount of kids books in that box, so we're thinking about putting a sign there to say kids book box coming, so that people know to drop the kids books into the, the second lot. But that would be, that's our problem.
Yeah, twenty thousand.
Yeah, same thing. Uh, E nine one one signs are in and being distributed, Javier, do you have a number of people who have approached for signs?
We had about nineteen or eighteen on the lack of compliance. And then I'll meet with Mr. Maxwell tomorrow at ten, we're gonna do that second round. I already have somebody on council saying yes. Um, so we'll set up general, uh, please, we have three signs for you.
So there were about sixty seven items that were out of compliance with street signs about.
Close to forty wants to clean up.
Right, and then twenty, approximately twenty were attended to, so.
And then the, the twenty is people picking up signs, but there was a lot of compliance, people putting up what they wanted lettering wise also, uh, out of town, so it's, it's a stronger number than that.
Okay. Okay, so that's uh, we're picking that, we're gonna need to. The second communicate that we'll go up is just a general one for the community, so the first round was for people out of compliance with uh, house numbers. And then this one will just go up to the general communities and say it's more directly related to emergency preparedness. If you wanna have, make sure that first responders can find you in the dark and come to the sun for the plan.
Ms. Marshall, is there a quarterly report that ran, or is it just on one time?
No, so one time, the other, as far as I understand it, Chief, it's a good question, um, they, there's no reporting requirements, but if you go to apply for a second grant through them, then you wanna see what you did with the first grant, that you made good use, so it was maybe. But you know, in good faith, I wanna make sure we're tracking it and that we do have those numbers should be decided to move forward with a subsequent grant with the same foundation.
I just noticed on my controls, I've seen some differences. Whether it's them putting up their own numbers or the new signs that have gone up, it's, it's made a pretty big difference, I've seen.
That's great, thank you for that feedback, that's nice to know. Um, we worked on some, um, the briefing tonight for P cars as a separate item on the agenda, we talked about having emergency clothes for um, the police staff, um, so I'll leave the distinction for that, um, so later in the agenda. But that's then ongoing, and then the ops plan. I've been working on the ops plan and I have a draft almost completed, there are a number of gaps, as you might expect, in the ops plan. The ops plan really just cover the three days between when the town would have an incident and when we might expect help from the county, so that through the county ops plan, they said that you should be prepared to be on your own for at least seventy-two hours, or up to seventy-two hours. So we could potentially be on our own for that and, and potentially longer, depending on how big the incident was. It was never our intention to have the town's plan supersede the county's plan, but rather to dovetail with the county's plan. This is really just a town perspective, it's broken up into time segments, so for example, the first segment tells town staff, what do you do if you think an incident is coming? So if we have advanced warning of heavy rains with potential flooding, what activities should we be doing, who should be engaged for the inquiry, how should we set that up, etc. Then in the first four hours after an incident, the second twelve hours after, we put in twenty-four, forty-eight into seventy-two, so that's how the plan is broken out, it's got partners who are engaged with a certain specific set of activities. It's designed to be a flip chart so that if an incident were to occur or beyond the horizon, some of my hobbyer can flip to, okay, something's coming, who do I call, what do I do? Okay, hit the first four hours, what happens, there's an I C S chart, missing command, system chart that's in there that we drafted. All of this will probably be for council to review, and now I'd like to review it in a broader context with our partners, neighboring counties, Almar County, etc., to make sure everybody's on board, so that's the plan going forward. And that's all I have.
I think we have had more events in the year, so.
Thanks, Olivia.
A lot of good reports coming from events. And treasure, I'll hear anything to add with what you know was already.
Yeah, so I'll skip the uh, discussion about L G I D to discuss previously, but I'll just update from our stack of orders, been the fifth, our treasurer's report. Uh, Melanie, uh, it's complete in September twenty twenty-four financial statements. It is finalizing in October twenty twenty-four financial statements for approval during our December regular session meeting. Uh, she's gonna share some, um, some uh, graphics and some reporting, uh, taking some input she received from the town council, so we'll see if we can get some input about uh, easy readability, um, and uh, on uh, on our financial reports, I think she already shared it with two council members to get spent, but it'd be time. Uh, but that's it for treasurer's report, Mayor.
I agree, questions, Paul here. Uh, well, I guess you've just been pretty much uh, working with the, uh, probably half the committees. Covering the areas, not what you saw before, I just.
One thing I was proud to say though, since I, I wasn't there, I didn't even hear from you all, but I did bring a few extra participants. One of the participants said, it was the best day ever. It was a grand job, he had been with the Baptist church to the museum, to the face painting, to the bounce house, and not everything, but it was sweet to see all the things happening.
I see Grinch, what's, he was singing in the back. Next, next week's meeting on Monday, uh, Mr. So, or, of course, we're all gonna be here. Uh, at that point, anyone hasn't uh, had the opportunity to reach more in, he was where, in our new town, so people and, uh, as the, the place up for. So, he will be here to do the swar again next Tuesday. When the, when the others start. Can I work first, can I work first?
It sounds like he's coming here.
Sure, we'll go ahead, this is my.
Sure.
Making official meeting actually, that will set our annual meeting for next year for Tuesday, January twenty-first, this, this is twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And at that beginning, it's when we usually uh, elect our, our vice mayor or president of the council, whichever we want to approach it, in, in this case, Mayor Allen. That will be coming up in January. And of course, next uh, next meeting, we've already approved a a call for a public hearing on the truck situation, I didn't make the truck situation, so we'll hopefully can take care of that next uh, week two. So that's all I have, Mr. Bowley, you have your thing?
Can I, this, one thing about that, one of the things, um, considering on the ops plan that we talked about, in order to be good in the school, you really have to have contact names and phone numbers in this thing. Because you don't wanna have somebody calling a general number, not knowing who's on the other side when you're in an emergency. So one of the things that was recommended is that it would be updated on an annual basis, so what would be, I think, purpose to build in at this type of meeting to say, okay, by what day that we're gonna be here with our ops plan. Obviously, it's not ready this year, so there's no activity that needs to take place this year. But the following year, if it is adopted, all those names and numbers could have to be updated and changed. We need to build it into a sort of regular process so that we have everybody listed, um, accurately before.
Let me ask something about that, I'm not sure if you know, probably, I think it's the, the trauma. Uh, do we need to, uh, just put aside or vote on whether you wanna have two trucks or one truck? There's, the timing is different, you know, we're gonna get one truck definitely when he gets his truck, and the other one will be one at, because we can't wait. So we'll have two trucks in a sense. So we need to decide whether we wanna have two trucks, be two trucks, and I think it has a bearing on the cost too, if we have two trucks. You know, the, the one truck we're buying, it doesn't need to be a parade truck, doesn't have to be a fancy truck, but just something, a backup truck. And if it's like, if we're only gonna have one truck, that would be, you know, anyway, I think that's something to discuss uh, next week, or I don't know if we wanna discuss that.
That's the point, uh, the thing is that the chief's current truck will probably not be available by the next fall.
Oh, really? So we get to sign that down to vote.
So, we have to even think about, once we get the truck in here, let's say that funding doesn't come from the, the fireboard, the rescue board, uh, we get the truck in here, we still have twenty grand in built, so that truck sets until that money does transfer over, and we can finish the project, so we're just talking about purchasing the truck. We need a town truck and his, his current truck won't be available till sometime after the, after the fall.
Well, also, we had two trucks in the past, and that actually was very good for the town, right? When one broke down, we had the use of the others, so it's not a bad, it's not a bad thing to have to.
So they have it next week, so I don't want to put any discussion on that.
Mr. Bowler?
Well, the chief's already talked about a flock, not the biggest thing. He said what needs to be settled, I sent you today, the, uh, two circuit court orders for the, you know, rid of election for the.
We received a copy from the mayor and the clerk for the, for the, rid of election there.
Oh, okay, I, I sent it out, I thought I sent an email out. Yeah, okay. Uh, that speaks for itself, and then I talked to Javier about, uh, make sure it's up to speed for dealing with the new, uh, town council members.
Well, we have those manuals written up, don't forget those, right?
Yeah, I have it on the desk, I already showed.
Okay, then printed out along with the M L.
Yeah, so later on this week, I'll probably meet with the two new council members and then I'll double check.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes, same here this week, meeting, it's Javier and, and the new guys. So we can take the wall.
I'm glad the process has been through.
Yeah, I, I'm very grateful for, uh, the report you read of this, that's, that was the starting point for us to get on board.
You know, I don't know, there's plenty of, but you know, they could be encouraged or go to those V M, one of those V L L trains. That's, those are really good, I, I went to, one question.
They have online.
Yeah, we got, they just got paid.
They have online for.
Right, yeah, but it's very valuable.
One is a generally known, the other one's conflict interference.
But I think just an orientation like that helps a lot.
I've already spoke both to the mayor and, uh, uh, and, uh, Jim about, uh, setting up for those meetings. So they already sent out contact information to, we're not the only body that's probably anticipating, and then you're trying to get people trained. So I'll, I'll, with the new council members on that, and then I guess provide an opportunity for anybody needing more pressure too.
All right, thank you for, Bob here, or me, a little bowling.
This, uh, is it gonna be, uh, minutes next week for these meetings?
Um, let me check in with my clerk. Uh, I hope so, I think we have some outstanding minutes from last month.
It'd be good to go.
We just need to get.
For just the last meeting and last, last, last month's meeting.
So, uh, procurement cards, I hear you, uh, ladies, brother, what's, or, I haven't started all that.
Might be more appropriate, turn it over to Heidi.
Okay, so if you recall, the last meeting, so we talked about these. For lack of a better word, P cards, procurement cards for, um, our police officers. Chief already has one, a man asked me to write up a little briefing on it and bring it back, and that's what you have in front of you in your packets. The purpose, um, serves to describe a need and request, um, justification for a limited. Emergency use credit card for town officers serving in the local municipal police department. You can read the rationale here, that the officers, uh, if they have a need save for gas or other emergency essentials. And whether to respond thoroughly to an incident. These cards are often issued by state municipalities and organizations for similar reasons. The details are, these cards have a set notice limit by policy or by issuance. So, um, Javier was looking at redoing a policy for all cards that are, um, credit cards issued by the town. And this policy would cover the use of these cards by the officers. Uh, they are to be used for emergency purposes only. An unauthorized use is against town policy and could result in an officer's termination, depending on the circumstances. If the cars are used, the S P P D is required to submit a subject report to the town administrator specifying the charges and why slash how the card is used. Officers, uh, will agree in a test to protect the card as they would protect their own personal credit card. These types of, uh, details are not new to any kind of credit card issuance in any other organization, pretty much. As part of the issuance, any card loss will be reported immediately to town administrator and issuing credit card company. All cards will be returned to S P P D, sharing officer, the town service. S P P D chief will be responsible for tracking issuance and sales of cards issued. And then, uh, it talks about the policy update. And the request here is to issue three credit cards or S P P D used to be kept by officers. For emergencies only for the discretion of the chief of police or town administrator. Um, Chief, do you wanna add anything? I think we've gone over those points, you don't see anything objectionable in there?
Yeah, I got a copy of the, of the, I'll see from their forums, and I follow it. Uh, when I talked to the counties, uh, um, finance department, they were told me that, uh. Each department doesn't have their own separate policy, they say whole charging. County policies, so my recommendation would be that it's an whole charging. Town policy that regulates all of the car purchases, of town hall, the police department, and any other department that may in the future have.
It's a standard procedure in any organization, pretty much.
I think it's a good idea, and the mayor wrote something last time about, uh, just issuing cards to our council. I don't know if that would be easier or would, but it's hard to.
Great question, um, I did talk with the, uh, county person in charge of the cards there and then talk about the, uh. Uh, lower interest rates on the P cards and things like that, and I think there's rebates that, that come back. Uh, to, on the cards as well, so those were the two biggest benefits. Interest rates and rebates coming back to the county, well, over to the jurisdiction would be the biggest benefit.
But the use is expected to be so frequent that I'm not sure that that really gives us all that much benefit. And then on the P card system, I mean, it is a formal system that you have to log into, you have to track. So it's just one more thing for us to do, the easiest thing is to issue these personally for now. And we, we can tap into the system, that's great, but at least for now, if it's season, weather coming and being where it is. Our officers will be.
You'd be lucky, should be a little bit to the, to the full-time paid officer. I, I would recommend council medical meeting for, uh. The two patrol officers, myself, of course, I've got one, and let's, uh. I totally know if you were interested in the, uh, sergeant, part-time sergeant. I mean, he's in charge when I'm out of town. Uh, but officers will be in town, so they have the ability, so I'll just take the third.
I was all the way officer and I, uh. Oh, the officer would much appreciate what they do.
Yeah, I bet.
You're not full-time paid officer, so they don't give you a grip.
Yeah. So Javier, could you also predict, you know, just approval of that initial vote on the P cards for the officers at the town council? Also, Mr. Mr. Mayor, are we done with this topic? Cause I just wanna go back. I'm finished, or, I just wanna go back to one thing though on the P C. It did kind of bring to everybody's attention that while we were filling out the emergency ops plan for the town. We did find out that we, our normal evacuation center, should we have to evacuate people during, let's say, a flood? Is Scottsville Elementary, if Scottsville Elementary is inspected, not affected. Then we have a problem, we have to fall to a secondary location, which for the county is the answer. However, my crew responded and said, well, the county has an M O U with P N C, the town does not. So that is something that we want to look at potentially getting in place. To make sure the town is covered for secondary evacuation, should the need arise.
I might, I might advise, uh, for council, yeah.
Well, we could, that is a not good message going, we certainly could.
I mean, it's a drastic emergency, you gotta get, you know, a far away distance, you want something closer.
Yeah, but we just need to make sure, and I have no, you know, I, I, I don't have a feeling about where, what that site should be. But my only point is, we should have a secondary site.
Yeah, regardless of possible merits and I guess the merits to location. I might suggest, and I was gonna include it on the agenda for next week, topics for that joint meeting we're gonna have with the, uh, county. And even an overarching message from the town, okay, this, these are of one of various priorities that we wanna collaborate with the county about. Um, I might suggest that it's made the agenda item down that route.
There's also some details in the plan that would be helpful to get answers to, and I'm not sure even the county knows. So for example, in the template that we have, it, it aptly asks, how many beds does that facility have? Is it A B A compliant? Does it have showers? Does it have a kitchen facility? But if you've got people there for three days, those things are really important. We also haven't, um, we haven't worked out who would take, who would take care of people's pets? Where would we put their pets? They probably would not be allowed in the shelter themselves, but we need a mechanism to tag those pets. And also a place to put the pets, there are many people that we've seen in other incidents where they will not evacuate without their. So we need to make sure that that's taken care of, but these are all open questions in the ops plan right now, that I got to close those gaps over the next. Six months.
Swar, you know, something.
If that's useful anymore. It was sort of peasants evacuation point, God, uh. You know, people play well.
Yeah, they're staffed, they don't give a damn.
You know, like, it's like a big good place at the Baptist church, it's up on a hill there. It's in town, it's pretty big. Oh, yeah, it's got an elevator now.
Situation where it's gonna call for, uh, gradually the town, they all look into a probably, I would say.
Yeah.
Kind, well, it depends on, I mean, if flooding happens in town, but isn't.
There was so close.
You know, that, that kind of flood, schools closed.
Yeah.
I don't think about this flood, I think about some of these winter storms.
Yeah, right, trees down.
Or the, the ratio that we had a few years ago when the power was out for a number of days or extremely hot, we needed water. Cooling center, things where people, older people, you know, like myself, they're getting the cooling down.
I need air conditioning.
It's, it's those derachios, those winter storms that knock out powerful long time, and people don't have heat. Those types of things, they.
Well, it's only everything I think is, I almost feel like we, we need to just wrap this, uh, order zoning, feel loud, it's just, we got unwilling people, last day. Rather than messing around.
So you had words off.
Well, so obviously, you have only kind of, and sitting right there in front of us.
But we're sorry, there, there we go.
You too, thank you.